All right, we are all set.
Awesome. Thanks so much Maggie. So I appreciate everyone's flexibility today. We I did not realize when we originally scheduled that we could not livestream two meetings at once. So I learned something new last week. So thank you all. We are on a pretty tight timeline because audit and finance starts at two o'clock. So just for everyone to be mindful of how long we have within the hour, but we are officially calling our governance ad hoc committee in session, the session. And we have on the phone Kim and Cindy. So ultimately, our agenda today is to review the timeline set forth, particularly for community outreach sessions and community engagement sessions to discuss timelines. And to Ms. Waters has been asking some questions around the hiring of a superintendent firm in alignment with this timeline. So want to discuss that as well if it's something that we need to fit in and just kind of get on the same page there. And we do have Anita Huggins joining us as well.
Hey, everybody. How are you?
Good.
It's great to see you. I'm doing well. Thank you for asking.
Kim, would you like, do you want to share your screen or would you like me to?
I'm happy to share mine.
Perfect.
I'll go ahead and Lauren, thank you for having us today. I believe that Lauren has shared the document with you that I am about to share with you. It is our next steps document. So Cindy and I and our team have come up with what we believe are the best next steps for you in your community engagement and outreach for looking at goals and guardrails. So has everyone received the document in question? It's entitled expedited next steps. And I'm sharing it now. Is everyone able to see that? Great. Okay. Excellent. So this, this particular document outlines next steps and I've gone over this. Or I would like to go over this with all of you. And then I would also like you'll see various points throughout the document you'll see in red brackets, the date is required. So we do want a goal is to fill this in before leaving today. So we all are all on the same page from the standpoint of when things are expected to be completed. So the first, the first piece, step one is really sorting our master list. So what we've done is the board members that participated, all board members were invited to participate in providing to us groups of individuals who they would either like to invite to sessions or meetings that they felt would be appropriate to go and present. At so either the engagement piece or the outreach piece. So all board members were asked to participate. We then compiled everyone who did participate into a list. And so we have a master list. I think that was the other item that was shared with everyone. We have a master list of possible groups of individuals that we would like to engage and locations where we would like to do some outreach. So Lauren has and we've identified that this could be the committee chair or designate me. Lauren has gone through the list and I would welcome everyone to certainly take a look at what she's done in that list to make sure that we have included or we've identified things accurately. I'm just going to pull that list up here. Does this look, look good to everyone? So we've got an engagement tab down at the bottom and an outreach tab. So the, the tab I'm currently on lists the, the name of the group or the organization, the contact person that we would like to do engagement with. And then what Lauren has done is she's identified the group or type and then potential groupings based on that group or type or the focus. So this first one here, someone, one of the board members identified that we felt it was important to go out to the middle school feeder pattern. So we've included kind of the, the documentation that the board member included or the, the, the information that the board member included, but essentially what we wanted to do was host a session at each of the high schools inviting the middle school feeder patterns as well as, you know, PTAs, the elementary school feeders. Their PTA groups, the SICs, that sort of thing. So this particular group or focus Lauren identified as administration and staff. So if we're inviting our PTAs, parents, the SICs. And forgive me, I, I mentioned that incorrectly. The recommendation was to host these at middle schools. I think I believe, I believe I said high schools, but if we're inviting all of our parents and parent organizations.
Sorry, Kim, I did not see that this was more for the SICs and PTA groups.
Okay.
So yeah, we can change that. I definitely did not label that one correctly.
Okay. So the group or focus in this case wouldn't be necessarily administration or staff, but it would be more parents, I believe. So we can make that updates. So do we just, do we group them parents, caregivers? Okay. So you can see what, what the, the process is just looking at each of the individual groups, the contact individuals, identifying what type of group are they? Are they parents? Are they students? Are they community members? Identifying that group and then assigning a number to each group type. The reason for this is if we can group together all of our parent groups, for example, and potentially depending on how many sessions we determine that we can have, we can group them together. So it might make sense to do this particular parent group in conjunction with another parent group. If it doesn't make sense to do that, we don't necessarily need to, but a part of the process is to say, let's look at all the parent parent groups and see if any of them make sense to invite together. Any questions around what has been done here or what we've asked you to do in step one?
Yeah, this is my first time seeing the document. So I'm not clear.
I did send it last week.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe I didn't see it.
So I sent it on August 31st.
Oh gosh, I'm sorry. I, I remember filling in and I don't remember doing this. So where I see things like partners or community, those are things that can be combined.
So this rows A and B, what we've done in, in rows C and beyond, those are the compiled pieces of information. So we took every single board member's feedback, feedback rather, all of your, you all had individual spreadsheets. We compiled them into one master list. So our master list is organized by engagement on this tab and then outreach on the second tab. And what we've asked to do is a part of step one of a next steps, which Lauren has already started here is she's identified columns A and B. So she's put in what type of group is this or what is the focus? And then she's assigned the number. So she's already got a jumpstart on this last week. As the committee, I just wanted to bring your attention and awareness to it. And as I would say, review it, make sure that you're okay with what she has identified here to get another set of eyes on it. Um, and then make any adjustments or changes as necessary.
And I would like, just go ahead and I do have some concerns. Not all board members participated in this. So we have some clear gaps, particularly in our rural areas. So we need to look through this to really be mindful of what we can combine and what we need to add in addition. I have shared this with Ms. Huggins and Ms. Simmons and I'm meeting with Superintendent Kennedy this afternoon to make sure that we can appropriately fill in these gaps. But with the number of board members participating and right now it looks like five will be participating in these sessions, the, the five of us cannot do all of these sessions over the next three weeks. So we're going to have to combine and we're going to have to add some owns, especially to make sure that we are getting the feedback from our rural communities. So just when you're looking through this, be mindful and just that Kim, like Kim called, I did not see that was for the PTA and SIC. So I could very well have some of these classified wrong and we need to go back and rotate. So that's why I shared it with the committee and have shared with Anita and her team. So you know, there's no ownership to this. Kim and them did a wonderful job. So if you feel like something needs to be classified and I did provide these instructions in the emails that I sent out that to the committee of how these were numbered and labeled based on what Kim provided, Kim and Cindy provided me. So please feel free to go through and edit.
I do have a question that I've been trying to, trying to get in and ask real quick. Can I, does it make sense at all to combine some of the, or provide some of the opportunities across districts? Is, is that allowed? Because I'm just thinking about how to make sure everybody's represented and some of the districts that kind of align border wise, how we could, how we could kind of tackle two birds with one stone where there's not enough representation.
Yes, it does. So that's the column B in this document that would give us potential opportunities for groupings. Well, that particular column is going to allow us to do that. So what we'll do is we'll resort this document. Once we've identified each of the group types, we'll resort it and take a look at all of our parents' group types and, and see if it does make sense for any of those to be combined or invited to the same location, that sort of thing. So absolutely. We do have a limited number of time and we want to cover as much, as much of your district as possible and reach out to as many participants as possible from the standpoint of, of different types of groups. And I do just want to make one, one clarification. Lauren, you had mentioned only five board members participated in the, in completing these documents initially. That does not mean that only five members will participate in the engagement and outreach sessions. So we will open it up to all board members. It is the expectation that all, all board members, all nine board members participate in the engagement and outreach. So even if they didn't participate in step one of identifying who they felt were appropriate engagement or outreach opportunities, we would offer them an opportunity and expect that they sign up to participate.
I agree, just based on some conversations. That's what I'm anticipating.
Okay.
Can I make a comment about the grouping? So I see a couple of groupings that seem really sparse. Like nine and 13. I'm just looking at the numbers right now. Number, the ones that are labeled nine and 13, there's only one in each of those. And so I'm wondering like with nine, couldn't that fit into one of the community sessions? I mean, if partners want to show up at a community session, that seems appropriate. But what's 13 students? So do we have some other ideas for students other than meeting at Burke High School? Because I think that, oh, I see another students down here, but it's got a different number on it. So I'm confused. I thought the numbers were to match the, the categories of engagement. Are you talking, or is that an individual session?
So they're just a little bit different. The way in which Lauren categorized these, this was both students and alumni. And this one, it appears to be just students. So I, that's why they've got a different categorization. If you want to be less specific and just bunch them into students and alumni, you can certainly do that. We gave kind of, we gave options for groupings. You don't necessarily need to follow those options. You could come up with fewer or come up with more with regards to that column A.
What do you think Lauren? Since you've obviously worked on this a lot more.
You know, just early college has, they've had what? Two graduating classes, Anita? And so I didn't think there was going to be a huge alumni population, whereas Burke has a huge alumni population. But I mean, I'm open to changing any of these. Some of them I do think we can combine based on geographic areas like Courtney mentioned. I think with the partners, we could invite them to one session. So ultimately this is going to be the work of the ad hoc committee.
Okay. So we'll talk about it more.
Yes, but we need to do it quickly because like the, several of the constituent board meetings there this week and happen over the next two weeks. So we need to start getting things scheduled. Maggie's helping facilitate this from a logistical standpoint from the district and we need to get those things on their calendars. And we're trying to be very, very mindful of our principals and staff, schools in session. They're incredibly busy. So making sure that they're aware when we need to hold events. So we need to do this within the next day to send it out to board members for signup and start getting these things scheduled.
Okay. So that brings us back to our, our list. This the first document that we have. So what I'm hearing is you want this due date to be end of day tomorrow, Lauren, potentially.
For the scheduling piece, is that having individual board members actually sign up?
The signup piece is going to come in step three, which we will need to determine that due date as well. Yep. So in step one, yeah, step one would be going through that document that we just reviewed, making those determinations. And Lauren, I believe you shared this document, the one that I'm on right now with Kristen and Courtney. Is that correct?
I did.
So you have both documents. Okay. Excellent. Okay. So I'm going to potentially, I'm going to keep it in red, but I'm going to potentially put the seventh here as a possible due date as we go through the engagement, step two, engagement sessions are scheduled. I believe Courtney, excuse me, Lauren, I believe that you have identified that we will be receiving assistance from Maggie in order to assist with that. For some of the logistical pieces. And then step three, the next thing that we talked about is board member signup. So going through that list after it's been finalized, well, it's not finalized. I shouldn't use that word, going through that list by the committee and then that particular list will become public to all board members. They will all receive an opportunity. I'll show you in in the document itself, there's a column that says board number one and board number two, know knowing full well, the board members have different roles. If they're board number one, they're check, they check logistics and are the main facilitators, whereas board number two, they are taking notes and submitting notes. So but each board member would have access to this particular document. We would let them know a very specific date and time to start signup. And then when signup is due, and you can see here, the dropdown boxes is populated with the board members' last names. So they have opportunities then to sign up. And if two board members, it is a requirement, know that we also have done this on the outreach tab. So both tabs will require attention. If the board members or if the, the sessions rather, do not have two members signed up, that would eliminate that session from, from being run or occurring. We also require that board members participate in opportunities that are not just their own opportunities or areas of representation or their usual networks. So if I'm the person that typically engages in conversations with a particular faith group, perhaps I am a member of that faith organization. It would, it would be our hope that I would let other board members go and be the representatives at that particular opportunity. And then I would go to a different opportunity. So we're hearing, we're hearing things, you know, from constituents that are outside of our, our representation area. Questions on that?
So my concern is that we're just in a very tight timeline. There are a lot of meetings that happen at the beginning of the month, especially within our constituent boards and some of the political meetings that we've listed is that we send this out to board members on Friday that we are presenting this in the committee of the whole group on Monday.
Okay. So Friday is the ninth.
Kristen and Courtney, how do you guys feel about this? I know that it's not ideal because we've got a lot of work to do this afternoon and tomorrow to get this cleaned up.
I mean, oh, I'm sorry, Lauren. It broke up on my end. I didn't, I didn't mean to. Okay, you're off.
No, no, you're good. I'm just concerned that we're going to miss some really critical meetings if we don't expedite this process within the week and make sure that boards have some ample time over the weekend to review this list. And that I'm also able to coordinate with Anita and Superintendent Kennedy and just making sure that we're filling any gaps across the district.
Yeah, I, I agree. I did this morning in the agenda setting add a space for this, for the ad hoc committee to discuss this. So if we could have it ready to, to present on Monday, that'd be great. The other thing I'm just concerned about is the, the, the piece around canceling a session if two board members don't sign up. Kim, what happens if two board members sign up, but two board members don't show up?
Oh, yeah.
That would be unacceptable.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
We, I, Cindy, perhaps you can chime in here, but that would not be then considered a true engagement or outreach opportunity. We would not be able to collect data in the way in which we intend to collect it and present it in the way we intend, you know, that we want to go out into the community and follow a very specific script. Everyone, regardless of what session they attend, they will hear the same thing from board members and we will be collecting data in the same way. If we don't have two board members there, then we would not be able to execute with the fidelity as planned. Cindy, would, do you have anything to add to that?
Not really. I mean, just, just the way that it's set up with the, the idea about the table conversations and everything that Kim said is pretty accurate and yeah, I although troubleshooting that I'm, I'm not even sure how, how you would, how one board member would facilitate that. And it, it would be pretty difficult, but are, is there a concern? Is there a reason for that question? I guess is what I would ask to do. Is there any anticipation?
No, just general. I mean, things happen. I mean, you know, I was the only, you know, I mean, several things happened. For instance, you know, Reverend Mac and Ms. Darby both have personal things going on and I was the only board member in agenda setting. You know what I'm saying? Like things can just happen. And so I'm just wondering, not, not that I'm anticipating anyone intentionally not showing up, but just trying to think ahead about, you know, if I'm the board member in the room or if, if Kristen is the board member in the room and she ends up the only one there, you know, I I, I don't know if it's appropriate to at least inform the group about what would have been discussed. Go ahead and have the conversation, although it can be counted. I'm thinking about what to do in the moment to make sure we don't cause more disruption than anything else with our constituents.
Yeah. So what I wonder, wonder, yeah. What I wonder about doing as a troubleshooting for that is either having having board numbers that you could check in with, you know, say the day of somebody is ill or have something come up like you mentioned, then maybe try to find a backup board member that could come fill in so that there would be two members present. And then I think, as you mentioned, I think the best that you could do is if there's one board member is to yeah, just you probably wouldn't be able to facilitate a full discussion, but talk about the rationale for being there and perhaps making sure that they have the information to fill out answers to questions online, which we'll be providing a link for that as well.
Okay. Yeah. The online option is a, is a good backup for that to just at least go through what's said. And then they, we could at least still capture and synthesize their responses.
Absolutely. And thank you for, for clarifying that it was more of a, an emergency need rather than something that you were foreshadowing would happen. So certainly those things come up, but having a backup plan is great.
Can we hit on number one right quick? Just the note for the, so we're going to do a candidate listening session. The actual candidate pre-training will be at the end of the month. So they're recommending that board members that are not running for reelection host this. Dr. French, I'd like to go ahead and sign us up for this session. If you're available, I believe it's going to be from one to four o'clock.
Yeah, that's on the week of the 24th. It's the 24th, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh wait, it's the Friday. It's the 23rd.
Yeah, just to put that on your calendar. Not necessarily. There might be other board members that sign up, but just to put that on your calendar or your.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help with that.
All right. The next piece are outreach sessions. And no, these are, are not hosted by you. These are hosted by the group or organization. For example, a neighborhood association meeting that you would be invited to participate in. We need to identify the date range for this. So again, board member signup, they're already doing board member signup for the engagement piece as well. We can certainly use similar dates if you would like, but same logic. We have a board member two, or excuse me, board member one slot, a board member two slot. We want at least one with, in, signed up for each. Again, opportunities outside of their areas of representation and would be looking for a date range for that. Do you see that it would be appropriate to do the same date range as the engagement sessions?
Yes.
Yep.
So I will add this here. And then the last piece would be finalizing the session. So looking at the master list, identifying any sessions that did not receive two board members signed up. You'd want to adjust based on not having people signed up. All of the coordination for finalization, which I believe you've identified Maggie is the, the individual responsible for assisting with any of the sessions that are being hosted within the district versus outside of the district. So all of these, all of these dates, so the beginning date and ending date to finalize the sessions. So the first one.
I guess the beginning should be the 12th because that's, if we're ending that first, the signup on the 12th, then let's go ahead and start, starting. Does that sound good, Lauren?
Yeah, Kim and Cindy, this is my biggest concern because we're scheduled to have all these sessions done by the 23rd for you guys to put the information together in preparation for our October meetings. And it is really tight. I mean, that gives us two weeks to host all the community engagement and outreach sessions. And I'm just concerned that that's not enough time.
Yeah.
With this, from a scheduling standpoint. So I don't know if we need to look at extending this to like September 30th to be done. And you guys have the first week in October to consolidate the information, but I know we have to present at the Cal with our interim goals and, or the guard, goals and guardrails for the Cal and the board meeting in October.
Not the interim, but the
That, no, they are actual goals and the guardrails.
Right. But that's the due date for finishing the actual sessions. The finalization is finalizing the, the scheduling. Is that what we're talking about here?
I know, but if we're looking to finalize the scheduling.
Yeah. What date do you think we, the 14th?
I've, even
Go ahead.
I would maybe I would maybe wait until we get to the point of finalizing the sessions to see how, how this shakes out with. Um, you know, will board members be signing up to be able to conduct as many sessions as what we have listed right now? Um, I, it, so that may impact whether or not. Our, that timeframe is in fact um a reasonable timeframe.
Courtney, would you have time after the committee of the whole meeting to have a working session to identify? Where board members signed up, what holes that we have, how the list needs to be consolidated so we can finalize it by the thirteenth?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make.
I think so, yeah. I, I don't think that's a problem. So you're saying Monday, that would be Monday?
Yeah. So board members would get it on Fri- Thursday or Friday, if we can make that happen. As far as a due date, they'd have Thursday and Friday in the weekend to review the list and sign up. And then on Monday evening. Before the COW or after the COW. Go through the list and determine. What we need to eliminate. And that way I can coordinate with Maggie on scheduling the sessions.
Maybe it would be good to do before the COW then. Sorry, Courtney, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no worries. I'm also wondering if um, and I'm fine before or after. But if there, i- i- is, can the due date on Friday, um, well, I guess it would be end of day Fri- never mind, never mind.
I mean, we could. That on Thursday.
Yeah, cuz I'm just wondering if we could have it all complete before Friday so that it's actually. Just done and we're just kind of overviewing and, and putting it out to the community for the COW versus actually still trying to workshop it. Coming out of that meeting, just cuz you can kind of lose people's focus the day after a meeting, you know?
Oh, so, so. I thought that we were putting out the list for board members on Thursday or Friday to get them to sign up. And it wouldn't be finalized until Monday. Is that correct?
That's what we had originally put down.
Right. Um.
But we could finalize this by tomorrow, Kim, as far as like the designations and try and get it out to board members.
So uh can I just clarify the steps that you feel? So can we go through step one? You will, you as a committee will complete by end of day tomorrow. Step three is where we were having board members sign up between the ninth and the twelfth. Pardon me?
Go ahead, Courtney.
Well, that was, I was just gonna say that, that step is what Lauren and I are talking about. Will they need to submit by the eleventh? Or maybe noon on the twelfth, something so that we could have it finalized before Monday is where the question was.
Right. It's possible that you won't get the, that you may, we may want to ask people to sign up on Monday that haven't already signed up. So if we had a deadline at the eleventh, then that, that gives us room on Monday morning to start. Reaching out to people individually.
Yeah, it's not an issue, I guess, either way, but we can't keep waiting on folks with this tight, tight timeline. Like, if we could get on the phone and say, hey, in the next two days. Can you just put your name by what you wanna do? I mean, but I, um, I'm fine with giving more time, but I do just wanna name that the waiting is, is actually. Kind of going, you know, it's, it's sort of taking for granted time we really don't have.
Right. I, yeah, I, I get that. I know that. Everybody has different schedules. This is a particularly busy week for me. But um. I think we, I think it is good to reach out to people as we do this instead of just putting it there and waiting. I agree.
Kim, let's do the eighth through the eleventh.
Cuz the other piece about scheduling is the sooner you do it, the more likely you have the time available.
Right.
Okay.
So we need to find a time to meet before the committee of the whole meeting to review the list. Which we can work to schedule offline.
Alright.
Alright, and then to finalize the sessions, we originally had between the twelfth. And, and maybe we should go through each of the, all of what's required in order to finalize sessions. For the outreach sessions, board member one is responsible. For contacting the organization and making the appropriate arrangements to schedule those sessions. So we would need um. To identify the date um that those are going to begin or after, um, you know, all of that is completed. Then we are also identified, identifying for organizations outside of um the district. The, the way in which those are going to be scheduled. And I believe that you are um. This, these particular dates are going to be very tight to be looking for those community. Um, those sessions outside of the community, but we'll need to identify those dates as well.
And some of those have already passed. Like, I'm thinking about the KGM event. Like, they would have given us time, but it's the eighth. But that's a. So some of them won't even be on there.
Um, I thought that was, that's just an education committee meeting.
Yeah, but either way, they were, they would have given us space. I'm just naming the fact that some of these things, some of these opportunities may already be missed.
Ag- yeah, that's my concern too, especially, so the. Constituent board meetings, there's one. Happened with six and the, I mean, we've just gotta go through these things.
Well, Lauren, I just wanna say about the constituent board meetings, having it at their regular meeting doesn't. Really make as much sense to me as trying to have two or three constituent boards come together for one engagement session.
I'm just, I'm just using that as an example, just cuz it's the easiest thing to use and is, is an example that if we don't expedite this timeline.
Okay.
We're, we're not gonna be able to get in with all the groups listed in addition to making sure that we're serving. The groups that were not listed on this spreadsheet.
Okay.
Can I ask a, just a logistical question around that? So since we need to go through the, the work that we are supposed to do by tomorrow. Is one combing through the list to make sure that it's correct, but then also looking for opportunities to group. A- and figure out how we can fill in some of the missing pieces. It seems like we need a meeting. To talk about that cuz I, that feels a little bit more collaborative than siloed.
Yep.
I mean, Kim, what are your thoughts?
Um, yes, typically, um, what we would recommend, and we had discussed this with Lauren initially, but typically what we would recommend is that. Um, that process is actually done by the board um a- as an entire group at the board table or at the committee of a whole meeting. Um, in order to expedite this, we recommend it that it be either the committee. Uh, chair or the committee itself, um, just to, to be able to have, you know. More opportunities for meetings and getting, getting feedback. So I, I agree. This is something that's usually done with all nine. Um, but. The, the, you know, certainly the more eyes we can get on it, the better. Um, we're just under, you know, you've got to find a balance between. Getting the information that we need, getting what we need to accomplish, accomplish um in the, in the time that you have identified as your. Your um desired due dates.
So I guess the question I have is um, can we, is it possible? To do some sort of quick connection, just like working workshop kind of connection, maybe early in the morning, this evening. So I don't know. The evening is kind of hard. We all have these kids, but um, maybe in the mo- maybe in the morning. Or just at some point to make sure that we are aligned as a committee. And ma- and, and covering all of the area cuz I don't wanna get in the board mi- meeting and even if someone didn't participate, doesn't mean that they won't still say, hey, my area wasn't. And so I just wanna make sure we are inclusive, um, and we wanna actually hear from, from those areas. So. I'm just wondering if we can get on, get on a really quick connection, like forty-five minutes to run through what we. Walked, you know, what we generated once we look at the um, walk away from here and look at the, the list.
I agree. Is there any way that we can meet in person? Anita, would there be potentially be someone with, in your team that we could include as well?
Absolutely, Ms. Herdrick.
And um, I would say. If you're having difficulty finding um times when you're all available, that sort of thing, use the technology to benefit you. If you've, we've got this shared document, um, that is a Google Doc. You can use comments if you wanna communicate that way or suggestions. So all of you can be in the document, working and, and commenting at the same time. If you're not able to, you know, find. Uh, time in which that's working for all of you to meet, um, think, consider that as well.
But that would have to be posted to comply with your open meetings law as well, I believe. Any work you do online is, as a committee is also subject to open meetings law. So I would, I would recommend.
So the document would be posted as a view for the community, is it, um, Cindy? And then they would have the working document, is that correct?
I don't know if that would, I think you would have to ensure that however you went about it. It comply with.
Thank you. Thank you.
So then it couldn't be anytime before this time tomorrow, but, or you know, after this meeting tomorrow?
Based on our understanding, yes.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you.
What time would you guys be available tomorrow afternoon? And we can coordinate this offline as well if we can't find a, a quick time.
I could do four thirty or um, or after tomorrow.
Alright, it's Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Thank you, cuz I'm just confused. I think I can do that. Yeah, I can do evening as well, early evening or late afternoon.
Could we do five o'clock?
Yep.
Courtney, can you do five o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Anita, we, could we get somebody on your team at five o'clock?
I'm happy to, to serve, Ms. Herdrick, and um, five o'clock will work for me.
Perfect. Would y'all prefer to do it via Zoom?
Yes.
Yes. Unless you want kids running around cuz there will, y'all will be in tow. Anita, Anita has experienced that before. It is not pretty.
He is precious.
So we can do it tomorrow at five o'clock via Zoom. I'll have Maggie post. We'll go through the document. If you guys have time this evening to review of how we, how I've classified things. Again, there's no ownership to that classification. If you wanna make changes, please do so. And we will consolidate as needed and make sure that it's ready to go out to the board on Thursday, the eighth.
Okay, I think I requested editing access to the document and I, because I don't have it.
So Cindy will have to provide that.
Oh, okay.
I think I did. I, I saw the request and I think you should let me know if you didn't.
It's, keep switching back to my. Wrong account.
Do you wanna, do you wanna drop, drop your email to me that you want access? And I'll just add it to the document.
Okay. Alright, so the, the last item on this document are, do you want to fill in these due dates? Do you want to wait and see uh where we land with the sign up before we identify the due dates? Or do we want to, in my mind, we should filter in the ideal dates, but. Um, I'd make adjustments if they need to based on the participation and the feedback that is occurring. What are your thoughts?
If we can dive in tomorrow to this, this document and the list to establish due dates, that would be great just to give. Uh, Dr. French and Courtney time to review the, the other documents and we'll have this done tomorrow as well. Does that work with you guys?
It does, and I am available tomorrow if you would like me to be there as a resource.
That'd be great.
Okay. Okay. So then, any questions on what needs to be done? On this, based on the steps that we've outlined here?
No, but I wanted Courtney to be able to discuss, um, we had started within a, a, a different ad hoc committee. The search for, for firms to find a superintendent.
Yes, and forgive me, I, I received, um, I sent an email regarding the superintendent search process. Without having a great understanding of the ad hoc committee. And I think I referenced in the email. Have the ad hoc committee review this document and I included a superintendent search document. And I didn't have a great understanding of this particular committee is the governance committee, but then there, there was another committee structure. That was in fact the superintendent search committee. And is it true that that committee is no longer a standing committee?
That's correct.
That is the case.
Oh, okay, okay.
Go, go ahead, Courtney.
Yeah, so essentially, once an ad hoc committee fulfills its duties, technically this one would have dissolved, but Reverend Mac decided, once we realized we needed a working group. He said, well, just, you know, we'll shift it and now it's to carry forward the work. But that superintendent search committee was set up, was established for the purpose of. Um, looking for search firms and getting us to a place where we narrowed it down. And what I shared with Kim and, and, and I shared this with Lauren as well, the concern there is that we've got this work that we started that's sort of hanging out there. That we need to, that we only stopped because we said we wanted to, to do it in line with this process. So we missed the opportunity in August. And so um, I did bring it up this morning in the agenda settings, put it on the COW, but to select a firm, um. To talk or bring, you know, bring back to the conversation that, that, that list of three that we had narrowed down. Um, and try to move forward with getting something in place because the concern is this is hiring season. That's getting ready to kick off for superintendents. Folks who are looking to make a transition will be interviewing in the late winter, spring timeframe. Late winter, early spring. And so if we don't have a firm until December. And we don't have a community profile until December and all of that sort of thing, then we've not even gotten our, our, you know, our application out long enough. To get a strong candidate pool through that timeframe and will potentially miss out on some great candidates. Who are just gonna place elsewhere.
Can I, can I add something?
Please.
Uh, the only thing is, uh, I'm also remembering from the, from email that. And looking at the document that Kim sent out, it really outlines how the goals that we set will inform our search. And so the fact is that we don't have the goals yet. And so that's, uh, it's difficult to be sure that we hire the right firm. If we don't know exactly what we're asking for and looking for a superintendent.
I'm not sure that I agree with that because a firm's job, a firm is.
I'm not sure that I agree with that because a firm's job, a firm isn't going to start looking for anything right away. They're actually going to go to the community, they're going to go to the district, they're going to look at all of our documents. So in selecting a firm, you know, this month or October, doesn't mean that they're going to go out and start searching. They're going to begin their work, which is quite a lengthy process.
And so you don't think that our community engagement can help inform that process through what comes up for the, the goals and guardrails?
It absolutely should, I'm talking about selecting a firm, not giving them their marching orders.
I agree with that, I think there's some alignment that we can establish within the community sessions to ensure that the community is aware of the search, the firm. We start making sure that they're aware of the community sessions that will take place. So I do agree that I think there can be some alignment in what we're doing and setting the goals and the guardrails and ultimately putting in place a firm, not necessarily putting out the job description and, and hiring. That is going to be the work of the next board.
Um, they do, they do go hand in hand. But I, but I'm, I, the community engagement and community outreach sessions are very much geared towards the goals and the guardrails and the script is pretty, pretty precise in what, what we want to be set at those, those sessions around those goals and guardrails. And then once those, those goals have been approved, you certainly are going to want, like Courtney said, give the, the firm their marching orders and say, this is what we're looking for. We want someone with a known track record who can help us achieve the, what we've identified as a community and codified in our goals and guardrails, what, what is most important to us? So I would, I would be leery of, of saying that you will want to have these community engagement and listen, listening sessions be doing both. There will be, I'm, I'm guessing what you would do is have additional community sessions around that superintendent search. But these are very specific to, to goals and guardrails and, and really identifying what is it that the community, what is their vision and what are their values?
Okay.
Yes, Kim, that's actually exactly what I think is that it should be a different set of meetings. And I think that's really advantageous because it, it'll start to create a pattern of going to the community about critical decision points before they happen.
That's a good point.
And you will, you will have, at that point, you will receive, we're going to combine all of the data, you know, every single, every single piece of feedback we get, we will combine for you and you will have the data around what your community is saying. Whether it's, the most important things are, you know, mathematics or literacy or whatever that ends up being, you will then have that in your conversation tool belt as you go out to the community and say, this is what you as a community have told us is most important when it comes to our students and, and what we want them to achieve. Now, what is it that you want to see in a superintendent to get us to achieving those goals while honoring our guardrails?
I'm sorry, guys, our hour went up very quickly. We have to start transitioning to audit and finance. I will have them publicly notice a meeting for tomorrow at five o'clock via Zoom and get that link out to everyone for our working session. And we will meet that deadline tomorrow afternoon. Again, Dr. French and Courtney, if you guys, guys can go ahead and review both lists just to make sure we're in alignment with how they were classified. And then tomorrow we'll, we'll go through and work on the meetings that we can merge together and start with the scheduling process. And Kim will be, get back with you and Cindy, I know you guys will be on the call tomorrow, but with the due dates for each of these sections. And I guess we can have further discussion on the agenda tomorrow of how to align this superintendent piece, even though these will not be a part of our conversations within these particular conversations for community outreach and community engagement, but the steps that we need to, to take.
Very good. Let me know if you need anything as you are reading through those documents this evening in preparation for tomorrow's meeting.
Thanks, everyone.